Yeah, all the county council meeting of Tuesday, July eighteenth order. And I would take and entertain a motion that you've all read and had a chance to go over the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve minutes from June twentieth, twenty-three council meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'm in the second. And all those in favor of that, I. Who's opposed next time? Motion carries. Okay, we have some guests with us tonight. We're happy to have them. Um, I'm just gonna go in the order here, so don't anybody get sent. You're not first, alright? I've got Girls Inc. off of it.
Alright. I'm not Susan Stahl for Girls Inc. I'm Jane Williams. Susan is ill tonight and she called me at four o'clock and asked if I could come in her um, to be, to replace her. So I'm going to do my best and I told her that I would certainly take questions from you that I can't answer and I will get them to Susan and have her email you a reply for, for questions. Um, she did tell me that she sent you out some documents electronically, a packet. Does anybody, she also made more packets. What's, oh, does anybody want any of the, um, another printed package? Okay. Sure. Anybody else? Sure. Okay. Alright. So, um, she sent, to begin, she sent a copy of our budget. And I want to say that I'm a, a board member and I'm a five-year board member, so um, I'm not an expert on all things budget, but I am familiar with it. Um, she sent a copy of our budget and, for your review. And then um, she wanted me to make sure that I thank you all sincerely for your support, for allowing us to be here and your past support. Um, she sent a document that also um, formalizes the request for eight thousand dollars. And then she asked me to tell you a little bit about what's going on with Girls Inc. this year, which that I'm enthusiastic about and I can definitely do that. Um, in two thousand and twenty-two, Girls Inc. started to emerge from the COVID vaccine, uh, vaccine, um, pro, um, pandemic. And of course, we've had to retool like everybody else. We're starting to emerge. Our numbers for two thousand and twenty-three are up from two thousand and twenty-two. In two thousand and twenty-two, we served a little over two hundred and fifty girls and the numbers are up. Um, also during COVID, obviously, we couldn't get out in the schools and do outreach in the schools. But we are returning to that next year, so we're super excited about that. Um, she sent two newsletters that go out to supporters and interested people around the community and I just wanted to hit a few highlights of what they contain, just to tell you the big points about what we've done. Um, in the summer programming, where we've got um, increasing numbers this year. The girls are doing um, things like going to the pool. Crystal Beach isn't open anymore, but they're going to partnering with this year Southwestern schools, last year Madison schools, and they go every week out to the schools. They partner with Madison Trolley and get transported out there. Uh, they go to a weekly movie. We partner with the Ohio Theater. They do a lot of fitness activities, wellness activities, mindfulness activities, all kinds of female activities, female-centric activities to um, really promote our mission of being strong, smart, and bold. Uh, my granddaughter actually goes there. She's a first grader and today she told me she went to a program on financial literacy. That was pretty exciting. And I said, did you like it? She said, yeah, it's just counting money. I said, yeah, that's true. So, uh, also lots of field trips and so forth. Um, this year, we also, I don't know if you realize this, we celebrated fifty years of Girls Incorporated. It's really morphed over the years. In the beginning, June Taylor was working out of a car going from school to school. So certainly we've come a long way. We had a large celebration, year-long celebration, then culminating in a celebration down at the Marriott, which was very successful. Um, one big thing that Girls Inc. is, in, in one way, that we're sort of changing and adapting because of the way cultures changed and our world has changed. Some girls can't get to the facility, so we're really, really focusing on outreach. And uh, one way is in um, Girls to Go, which every week, um, girls that want to participate get a bag of activities that promote um, those core values of being strong, smart, and bold. And uh, we've had huge success, great participation. The girls that take the bags tend to return them. This year, we increased our um, part, our outreach to four elementary. So that's really exciting. In addition, um, the Community Foundation of Switzerland County enabled Madison, um, or Jefferson County Girls Inc. to start some outreach out in Switzerland County. So that's really exciting. Um, we also have added new staff and they are featured in here, um, Outreach Coordinator, because that is such a big focus to meet, to just meet the needs as many, of as many girls as possible where they are. Um, Christian Cole was promoted to Program Director and then we have a new Development Director, Manager Susannah Stevens. Um, and then I just wanted to tell you about one, um, kind of a fun story about one Girls Inc. alum. Um, her name is Stacya Taylor. She, she lived here. She's a graduate or alumni of Rikers Ridge. She's currently a um, college student and she has got national recognition for developing a new type of suture for um, surgical patients from beet juice. And she found out that pH infected tissue changes and changes the color of beet juice. So red sutures turn to gray sutures. Then it's very inexpensive to make. It's, it's easily recognized. If, if tissue's infected, the sutures change color. So it's really great for like third-world country use and so forth because of its availability and so forth. So she's a great example of a Girls Inc. alum and Susan wanted me to share that story with you. She is actually featured in the Good Night Stories for Rebel Girls, A Hundred Tales of Extraordinary Women, and she isn't even out of college. And she wants to come back to Jefferson County and in, in, in some way and continue to serve us and she maintains her contact with Girls Inc. So I think that's all I need to share with you tonight. Is there any questions at all, budget questions that I can pass on to Susan?
I have a question.
Yes.
AVA was that average daily.
She just gave me the total numbers. I'll get it to you. You're welcome. Thanks for saying eighty-eight means my head went somewhere else. Okay. Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, up next, Jefferson County Kindness.
Here's some cards. Uh, I had a medical procedure this morning, so I was under anesthesia, so all eighteen of you look wonderful tonight. Seriously, it's, it's wearing off. I have a little bit of double vision, so I'm sorry. I'm Mike Sims. I'm the Chairman of Jefferson County Kindness. We started this nonprofit as an idea in October of two thousand and twenty-two. Finally became a five-one C three and incorporated through Indiana. We have given away over fourteen thousand dollars to people in desperate need, not desperate greed. We have also promoted acts of kindness on our uh, Facebook page. If, if any of you all are members, you will see that there's people that can get on our page and ask for the simplest things of, my lawnmowers broke down and I have no money. My husband had a heart attack. And the people that get on there are just amazing and get on there and I'll come and help you. I'll come do this. We've helped with Christmas. We've helped with uh, a couple of house fires. Uh, basically, we just promote kindness among people without judgment, without politics, without religion, without any social justice issues. Um, we have some, we have a major project we're working on and I'm gonna let Laurel Will talk to you about that. Excuse me, my throat does hurt today. Um, so basically, I wanted to let you all know about us, who we are. Uh, we're in the community. Uh, we have, we've done a lot of positive things for the community and we're growing faster than I realized we were growing. Um, we have a healthy bank account right now of about fifteen hundred dollars. We give away a thousand dollars approximately every sixty days to people in need. So if you ever know of anybody that's in desperate need, we would love to see you at a meeting and put their name in our bucket. And uh, hopefully a, a child can come up and pull the name out and our trustee of money will go and deliver it to them. So I'm gonna turn this on over to Laurel Whale and uh, tell her about, uh, tell us about, I'm sorry, still under anesthesia. Tell about the project we're working for. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm gonna pass around some folders that I made up just to help you understand the project a little better and I may not have enough. We'll be here. You can share with, whatever you can share with the project.
Probably matters.
Oh, okay. Um, okay, so I, we are working on a project, really, the, the big goal is to make Madison, Jefferson County more sensory-friendly. Um, I have been um, working on this um, as a parent and as someone who works um, in the deal with a lot of children and adults who have sensory issues. Um, and I came across a sensory vehicle that several other um, states have. And there's a um, company that produces the sensory vehicles. Um, we are basically trying to acquire this vehicle for the residents of Jefferson County. It would be free of charge for anybody that wanted to use it and it would be mostly for like events, like if we were having an event um, downtown or at a school or um, at Hanover. You could use, have this event available or this trailer available free of charge and it would allow um, individuals or families of someone on the spectrum with sensory issues or with um, just someone that's struggling with anxiety to be able to access the vehicle um, to re-regulate themselves um, if they're in a dysregulated state. Because it's difficult. Those kind of events are difficult for families and individuals. Um, so we think this would provide a safe space to individuals and families and it would also allow um, families and individuals to come to events that they most likely otherwise won't be able to come to. Um, we have several community organizations that are on board with this, including Hanover Town Board. But we requested a grant for Bethany Legacy and I think they're interested. Um, Ivy Tech is interested and and they're also interested in incorporating this into their curriculum somehow. Um, we have already shared the information with commissioners and um, the Health and Human Services Board. So this is just kind of a part of what we would like to see for our community to provide a safer um, safer place and support for those with sensory needs. Um, so the packet that I gave you has a lot of information in it about the vehicle, um, the cost, what is included with the vehicle and um, information on the sensors and all of them.
Laura, I have questions. I actually have a child that um, is on autism spectrum, so um, I totally get this, but who would be manning the vehicle and how often would it be parked somewhere? Um, can or um, events contact someone and have it outside of the event? So how old does that work? And is there a cost or a fee to someone to have it at their event? So kind of give me that logistics, so how that all works out.
There wouldn't be a cost or fee to have it at the event. Um, the upfront cost is purchasing it and then the goal is to have it available for free. I talked with um, Auburn Nursing College and Alabama has the vehicle and I talked with a professor there that utilizes it and helped get that going. Um, they, they, their nursing program actually manning, mans the vehicle. Um, so we're hoping to partner more with Ivy Tech so that they're wanting to develop that into their curriculum, that's my understanding. So we're hoping that we can work something out. There's also training through Culture City where um, we'll work on volunteers that might be willing to have that training. Um, maybe we, there would, I guess ideally, the vehicle would be able to use for one family at a time. You're, you're gonna use it for a short period of time. Most likely, um, we're not really gonna have someone else that's gonna intervene, I guess, with the family. It's just kind of a safe space for them to use and help. Um, and they, when I talked with the professor at Auburn, they suggested um, trying to park the vehicle close to like an ambulance, which probably gonna have an empty at the event as well. Just, they said they didn't have any issues, but it's just another precaution um, to take and that's another question that you had.
Um, so there's no fee to the families?
No.
Um, as the person that would need to utilize that, that kind of gets everything back to where they need to be, de-escalates themselves or whatever that, that they need to do. Um, maintenance, how, how would you get the funds to maintenance that be? Um, I, I'm assuming it's a trailer?
Yes.
Okay. And so the ongoing upkeep of maintenance, because you'd have to sanitize and all that. Um,
And the grant that we requested for Bethany Legacy, we asked for additional funds for maintenance insurance, um, gas. Um, we have a vehicle that can fill the trailer. Um, we're hoping that others that we're partnering with like Ivy Tech will assist with some of those ongoing expenses. I don't feel like there's gonna be a whole lot. Um, we also would like to purchase a tent, like a tent to put outside the vehicle with information. Um, and then that's probably where the person would be that's kind of overseeing the vehicle for the event would be. When I talked with the professor at Auburn, they said that was a good um, way to advocate and educate the public. Um, because they had a lot of people that came through just wanting to know what it was and what it was for and it gave them an opportunity to talk to them about sensory issues and um, how to help and how to support those on the spectrum.
So, uh, one more question that we, what do you want? Uh, I know you're presenting this as, you know, what you guys are doing and working on and moving forward. What is it that you're bringing in front of the commissioners and council, council?
I guess part of it is your support. They, um, the county would be willing to utilize it. I know Hanover is willing to utilize it. Um, and then also potential funding. We have Bethany Legacy for a grant to cover the expenses plus five years. Um, I don't have, and I sort of, for that grant, I just submitted it. So potentially assistance with funding, but mostly I think your support for the vehicle and utilizing when we have it.
Um, when I was at the Boys and Girls Club, we had sensory room. Uh, I'm assuming they probably still have one and checked with them to see about things or pros, things that you could put in that sensory uh, trailer.
The um, Culture City that's building the trailer, that's all they do is, yeah, so they have designed multiple trailers and they also have um, part of the, part of the cost is a wrap for the, for the trailer, so you can have like whoever is, I guess, a part of assisting with the trailer can have, like Bethany Legacy could design, design the wrap or if it was gonna be Bethany and Ivy Tech and Madison, they'd all collaborate on designing the wrap for the trailer. Um, but yeah, they, they're, they're experts in designing those and they're very supportive and helpful in answering questions about um, liability insurance, things like that, too, and training.
I'm glad you said insurance and you brought it away. That popped into my head. Luckily, certainly unfortunate, but unnecessary expense. I have a couple of questions. One, I was curious, this particular company, who are you looking to maybe hopefully purchase through? What, any specific age range that they suggest? And if this is geared toward children age three to seventeen?
Anybody with sensory issues, I would say well, there's pictures of, like, an example of a trailer, many other packets, but I think anybody could access it if they needed it.
And I, I guess my only other two questions, I've been having already answered. One is, I was curious, um, how close, if you've been able to see one in person and or like if you know, oh, there's two in the state of Indiana, I was, yeah, it was Maricón County. I just didn't know if you knew where the closest, they obviously could potentially be something that could be a shared tool between the neighboring county. Um, and because of a grand expense and obviously a particular, it was used at special events or school, school fairs or um, I think it was PPC, a partnership with another neighboring county. Um, I just didn't know if you had a chance to see one in front, if there was any close to us.
I think that would be great, because I don't think there's any really close to us. I've talked with Culture City to try to um, get some dates to when they might be a little closer. Chicago is the closest and I think they can make that happen at the time. Um, there's one out in Bama, Louisiana. There's one out west in Washington, New Jersey. Um, I've talked with the professor at Auburn about going out there and touring the trailer.
You, there may not even be one in Indiana, I don't think. I guess my only other question too, just obviously a lot, you're planning and sets grand kudos to those, putting in a lot of energy toward this. Someone will pams that. I can define what it's like and find people who just want two-hour shift at, shut up for a first aid, for information, but that, we got it. So I'm just, I can't imagine the trailer, it could be, obviously it can risk vandalism or, you know, people just going there clowning around, clowning around if they don't need to be in there. I'm just picturing, you know, like for a three-day festival weekend, how challenging that would be without a paid staff member to find somebody to be in there, because you would, whether it's your information tech with additional educational resources, which would be great. And when people say, oh, what is this? But also just being there for some supervision, even if you think, oh, that's a trusted family that's gonna take their child in there for some debriefing time. That's great, but then what happens when three more people swarm in or I just, I wondered if there's been more thought to that. And maybe it's back on Ivy Tech, like we're gonna pilot five events in twenty twenty-four, we can, yes, but we need a reminder from Ivy Tech nursing students to actually be those that would staff it. I don't know, I just, I didn't know. I felt like it would need to be staffed.
Yeah, it definitely would have to be staffed and it might be something where we can, if it's a three-day event, we might be able to take it back to wherever it's safe for the evening when the event's over for the day. Um, Ivy Tech also talked about trying to connect Hanover College and partnering, getting them involved in it too. So I am hoping, um, it sounds very promising that Ivy Tech and maybe Hanover.
I'd say maybe the Education Department, Hanover, and the Nursing Department, Ivy Tech, that might be a great, a great partnership. And it would potentially then be housed. Obviously, there's been a, but there's an encounter that would be used. Is that possibly would it be stored or housed maybe at Ivy Tech?
I don't think it'd be an issue with making sure we have it housed, but I think if Ivy Tech is that involved in it, then it probably makes sense to have a house here.
I think it's a great idea.
I do too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we still have some more time, would you have one of our other members that would like to say something? It's okay. We have time. Joey Snell is our media and trustee. I wanted to go over real quick some of the other things that we're doing with the group and a little bit about Ivy Tech. Um, myself and Mike have been in communication with them. So I'm Joey Snell, um, Special Deputy, Jefferson County Sheriff's Department Jail Division, and I started there in August of two thousand and seventeen. My wife was diagnosed with cancer in two thousand and twenty-one and I couldn't take it away, couldn't do anything to help her. And I felt helpless. So she was the kind of person that wanted to do things for others and this motivated me. I wanted to help others in honor of her and to kind of keep what she stood for going. Um, Mike and I spoke and he talked to me about this idea that he had to make a difference in our community and help people that, that were in need. And I was on board with it. The idea spoke to my aching heart and gave me purpose again. It also gave my wife happiness when she was still with us to see us doing something great. The group and I focused on receiving donations from the community so that we can help people in need with a helping hand with no strings and cash, no judgment. We started a Facebook page and today we have over two thousand members who are willing to jump in anywhere if they can. As Mike said, somebody that has a problem with their lawnmower to an elder who has a black tire. If they need assistance with food, we're there. After losing my wife in November two thousand and twenty-two, I felt an emptiness that was just indescribable. I poured everything that I had, all of my free time into this group and here are some of the things that we're doing. As they've been discussing, the mobile sensory vehicle for individuals with autism or on the spectrum. It's a way for them to look forward to participating in our community and this will give them a sense of security. They can participate in activities and no longer have to feel exploited. The kindness group was given a grant from Google to use on Google-based services such as ads and websites. Or a website. We've seen an opportunity to use this for training people that are wanting to pursue careers in marketing and online-based development and we've also seen an opportunity to do the same with individuals pursuing careers in the medical and mental health fields. Uh, we're trying to develop a partnership with them now. We had a meeting yesterday with them and a few weeks ago. Um, the mobile sensory vehicle and online-based design classes to assist online marketing uses the Google grant. This will not only help us reaching people further in our community, but it will be a positive learning tool for students that can start building their resumes for futures, may inspire both people in our community and others to start making a difference in their communities. We're partnering with the group to bring awareness to the community for mental health, autism, suicide prevention. And I am primarily tasked, like Mike said, with our Facebook posts and videos. I am a trustee of receiving money and taking people, taking it to people who are in need. And I'll soon be creating videos using voluntary actors to recreate how we do these things. These videos will be used on YouTube, Google, and Facebook. Um, every day we're seeing a way to help community in new and challenging ways and we can't do it just by ourselves. We need people that'll help us. And that's kind of why we reached out to uh, Ivy Tech or the online-based classes so that they can help us build these websites. And uh, it was their idea to get involved with the Mobile Sensory Unit. And um, they're putting us in communication with few people who teach the classes for memory. And that's all happening.
Awesome.
Thank you. That's all. I'd like to congratulate you for the people that you have helped already and the people that you'll help in the future. I've been following your progress and all the great things that you've done. So as a member of the community and as a member of the council, I congratulate you and urge you to continue the good work.
Well, I thank you. It's not me. It's, we just opened the door and the people have come in and it's, it's just acts of kindness that are just amazing. So, thank you.
Mike, yes, uh, I, I'd also like to add to what Ray said. Um, there's a lot of division in the world, in the country. And religion, politics, all those, those things are near and dear to us and they should be and they're all right and good. But I love it when there's something that can connect us and appeal to the better part of us and value each other even with our differences. And this is that kind of thing. It uh, it's a, it's a blessing and a benefit.
We, we do. We respect everyone's personal beliefs.
Right.
But in our, in our nonprofit, we just ask that people just be people helping people.
Right. And, and we're gonna have our differences.
Right.
But we also need to come together and value each other as neighbors and, and that's the kind of, what you're doing is, is promoting that and that's a, that's a great thing.
And again, it's not me. Alls I did was open the door and the good people that are on our board and the amazing people on our Facebook page in the community are the ones making it happen. But thank you.
You just connected it.
We did. We made it possible.
There you go.
Safe passage.
Wow, I don't know that I want to follow that. I am so inspired. I want to like, get connected a little bit more. Um, so I'm Carrie Kepman. I'm the Executive Director with the passage. I met you all last year as I started this endeavor after our, our longtime founder, Jane Yor retired. Um, so I've now been kind of in um, in the throes for the last year. And um, as you all are aware, um, how many people mean? And um, as you all are aware, um, how many people may not have been last year, because I don't want to repeat. Too much information in terms of what our agency does, I just want to briefly cover. That we provide domestic violence intervention and prevention, as well as intervention and prevention for sexual assault. Um, and in this last year, we've piloted sort of in that kindness vein. Um, a community connections program where we are trying to pilot services to those who are impacted. Their loved ones are impacted by domestic violence and sexual assault because. You know, the mental health needs and, and what people have spoken about, um, before me, there's such a. Trauma is sort of. Widespread when these things happen, and the impacts and the ripple effects extend. So we are constantly looking at new ways to um, prevent rather than just intervene. So the request that we have for your, for Jefferson County to support us, we do serve six counties, Jefferson is one of them. Um, I believe Mary included our twenty twenty two stats. For you guys to review, um, we served twenty nine of your residents in our shelter facility, which is one county over. We served ninety four non-residential clients and children. What that means is that they may have a safe place to stay here in the community, they may have contacted people at the kindness network and. Was, they were able to have rent or something to sustain them here, and we were able to provide support services or additional services. Um, we also, um, I think we have. Put in, in, in twenty twenty two, I don't have this number, and I don't want to float it on it, but. Somewhere right around ten thousand dollars towards your residents right here in Jefferson County to either. Maintain their housing, put a deposit down when they are fleeing. They may come into emergency shelter for a little bit, or have a safe place to stay with a support system here locally. But they just need that next step to get started. We're able, as the local nonprofit, to um, do some grant match funds and get those resources in. So we're moving people to safety and security. Um, we had a hundred and forty one helpline calls, that's specific to Jefferson County, that's how many we took from residents right here last year. That totaled eight hundred and eighty nine bed nights. Um, and we offered ten, one thousand sixty five units of community based services last year. So what that could look like is our hospital response. Um, in the last year, Norton's K D H started a same program finally. Here, right here, so victims of sexual assault can go to Norton's K D H and have that full forensic exam. They have a right to an advocate. We are twenty four seven on call and we get right there. Um, and we serve them in that needed time. Walk them through the legal system if they still choose that path, some do not, and we learn, it's very individual on how they want to do that. Um, but those are some of the types of community based services, um, support group. Um, one thing that's not listed here, we are, what is listed is that we're at Light White. Um, participatory and affairs and festivals, um, we do Hanover's orientation where every freshman comes in. Gets healthy relationship and prevention information and intervention information from. Um, our, our staff who, uh, the folks at Hanover has had, they've incorporated that into their freshman orientation. Um, we're visible at the libraries. One thing that's not on here that I want you all to know as well is we are going into Madison State Prison, and we are providing. Um, services for the inmates there. They, they get released at some point, they have their own trauma. You would be amazed at how many have that as part of their journey, and it has not been addressed. So we are trying to take a situation where we're expanding our resources as far as we can to touch as many community members here in Jefferson County as we can. Um, so, and also I think Mary submitted just kind of how we, we operate over six counties, and we try to be really, really. Um, get everybody's buy in, you know, get a, a little part from everybody that supports us and everybody that, you know, uses us for that need, so. We are facing a twenty percent decrease in our vocal funding, which is, um, we just weathered that a couple of years ago. And that is what's projected for the next federal round of funding, which is our main funder. So we are requesting a little bit of an increase to meet us halfway, like ten percent instead of the full twenty. We, we are active with fundraising, um, we have. One of our three main fundraisers was held here in Madison, it was just a few weeks ago, if any of you purchased meals from the Madison Church there and. Did uh, the Support With A Fork event, I want to thank you, that all of that money goes towards. Bridging those funding gaps, and so we are doing that. Um, we also have active members from the Jefferson County community come to. Our Handbags For Hope and our Help Hope Healing events, which are our other two top fundraisers, so we. Plan and execute those in order to um, bridge those funding gaps as well, so. That's my spiel, and if I can answer any specific questions, I will. I also have my cards, because I think like last year, I want to welcome you guys and anyone who is interested. Come to our, our residential facility, take a tour, see what we do hands on, we have you sign a confidentiality agreement, but. Come to the clearinghouse, spend an afternoon with Chelsea, who's based there right here in Jefferson County. Ask her any questions about what, what it is we do. It's hard to stand up here and kind of say that in, in a, an amount of time, but we welcome you into. How we are serving your residents, so that we can kind of paint that picture a little differently, um, than just here tonight.
I have, um, just one question and maybe one comment. Um, I did not know until I read it, read through. And just pulled it back up because I didn't want to speak. Um, I know the town of Hanover did provide funds, examining this, how you also, obviously it shows the county, um. Funding and, and these support counties, obviously, those that you provide services in, and. And what those twenty twenty three numbers are, it looks like the city of Lawrenceburg and Lawrenceburg Main Street as well, and I know obviously that's like twenty four even. Just curious, was there a funding request for the city of Madison?
There has been, I don't believe, like, this is what we have to date, and I think that we have. Yet, obviously another six months to go through, so I just had Mary prepare what we have to date. We do make those asks, and I, I hesitate, because we have certain townships on here, that doesn't mean that they want to. Give today, but what I can do is pull all of twenty twenty two to maybe. Send and give you a better picture of a full year.
Yeah, I was just curious.
But, yeah.
If that ask had been made at our city, and if it was in the studies, but. My only other guest statement, um, and I do work in the not-for-profit world, I'm Mr. Mothbrow. And when I first got the call saying that the hospital was my primary where was, um, maybe a couple nurses that were going through training and beginning up. Saying, um, designation, and I'm free for my year, um, so for sure, there's good passages. Um, I had somebody recently inquire and ask about, um, with, um. Support for domestic situation, and then there came up a couple meetings and conversations, and I'm. I just that most folks. Connected in the not-for-profit world are, are aware of what Safe Passages does, they probably know how to make a referral, they know, um. Yeah, uh, uh, resources at the residential facility, I'm a little maybe concerned that residents don't know. So I guess I would just challenge if there was any type of, um, media push, more awareness, um, if it's. Or flyers in the, like, restroom stalls, or I'm just a little fearful that, um. Stop the first few people we see on Main Street down in Madison, most of them probably wouldn't, wouldn't know. Maybe if you would have maybe heard, I'm not sure that anyone would know how to, how to reach out, um. And obviously, we hope that, that, I mean, one call is made, or they're reaching out to law enforcement, who of course. Is aware of, um, the support that you all can provide, I'm just thinking from a residential standpoint, um. You know, not necessarily something you can see on a billboard, maybe, you know, a fourth room in this, in the small community, but, yeah, any kind of, um. Marketing push for just the average citizen to know. The great support they can get from you if they need it, um, would be great for the average person, no?
I will make that, yeah, we, I know, I think one thing that's hard is, yes, you know, we are in the clearinghouse. We're unmarked, and we're unmarked on purpose, right? Yes, we have a shelter location unmarked, so I think the trick is to, to determine ways. We, we did recently purchase signs, and we, we do those sign campaigns, but we like to get permission, leave those up for two weeks. Come and put them in and take them out, so that they're not lingering in the community too long. So what, um, we've worked on is looking at your list of fairs and festivals and trying to really. Target the best time to do some of those things. The other thing that's coming is, um, if any of you have seen our pool tabs in. The areas where we're trying to reach residents, we're adding a QR code soon, so. People will be able to, I, we find that it'll be interesting to see, but we weren't sure about safety, okay? Because anytime if, if a perpetrator sees information on their victim's phone, right? That's why we try to handle the tabs with no, um, identifiers and things, so we had to do some research before we were able to. Comfortably launch that, but a lot of folks are using that QR code to get the information to a loved one or a support, so. We have finally determined that it's, it's better than not having it, because most people aren't taking phone numbers anymore, right? You're looking at, um, your technology to try to find those types of things, um. But, so we're gonna ease that in and do some more things that way, but I am all ears for suggestions, um, we try to have a present, presence at. Most of the local fairs and festivities, um, to get to, uh, you know, those average citizens, but. Um, I did make a note, so we can look into that more. Thanks for the feedback.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hello, um, most of you know me, but I'm gonna tell you who I am, for those who don't. My name's Deana Andrew, I'm a lifelong resident here in Jefferson County. I was a purchasing buyer for Dap Horning for ten years, in which time I was also in EMT. I was licensed in Kentucky, Indiana, and the National Registry. At that time, many moons ago, under Troy Morgan, I was a volunteer at K D H. I worked, um, on the ambulance squad at Dap Horning and for the city of Hamilton. When I was in EMT, we had no suicide prevention or intervention for them. World has changed a lot since I was in EMT. Um, we ask those people on the front lines to do a lot more today than they used to have to, including our policemen who are growing weary, I'm sure. Um, I owned my own business on Main Street. During which time I served on the Madison Area Chamber Board of Com- Commerce Board of Directors and on the Executive Board. I served on the Main Street Board, Venture Out Business Center Board, and their Executive Board. I would later be on the Jefferson House Board for Man, the Core Committee, and now the Board Director for the Recovery Cafe. I'm also in R E C, Residents Encounter Christ Jail Ministry Team, and I recently formed a group called Citizens of Jefferson County for Suicide Prevention. Community service is not new to me, it's something I believe in. My calling, purpose, and passion is to help the lost, the broken, the hurting, the lonely, the sick, and the forgotten. In the past year and a half, working on the startup of Recovery Cafe. And becoming involved with those in recovery from whatever keeps us from being our best self. Whether that is homelessness, mental health issues, substance abuse disorder, or trauma. I have learned we are all in recovery from something. And we all need help in pain sometimes. I've also learned that many of the things that keep us from being our best self stem from one common problem, mental health. Whether it's temporary or long term, mental health is a factor in many of our community issues, and we've heard a little bit about that tonight already. My son Cody was a great athlete, he worked hard and was naturally talented. He played four years of college baseball, one year semi-pro out in Cheyenne. Graduated Marion College with a double degree. After the loss of his alcoholic father to liver failure, and a new doctor who didn't know our family history. Cody was suffering depression from his father's death. He did not communicate that well, and the doctor did not ask enough questions. Cody was prescribed Adderall for attention disorder, which he did not have. His life was spiraled out of control in less than a year, and he became addicted to the prescription. His struggles is what have led me to have heart for those, the substance abuse disorder, who want recovery. That led me to understanding mental health and substance abuse disorders, going to him. He was excited about my work at Recovery Cafe and had hopes of helping me start there. Cody battled getting clean and relapsing for ten years. He had been clean for a long period, when his children and ex-wife moved an hour away. Only an hour away, but it was depressing to him. In a moment of weakness, he reached out to an old friend for what he thought was a Perth thirty, it was fentanyl. I lost my son to fentanyl poisoning in August of twenty two. My passion for helping those in need has increased tremendously because of my loss. My desire to serve the less fortunate will stay with me as long as I breathe. I know there's a shortage of mental health resources here, I know. That it's a challenge to find new help resources. How can citizens help? What can we do as a community? On June twenty second, less than a month ago, I got a call that a man in our community took his life by suicide. The family had called nine one one for help, and two sheriff deputies arrived and did all the right things, they followed the family to Norton's K D H. He was put in a room. Um, while waiting for a phone call to evaluate him. Again, this is not to slam anyone, this is just the fact that we don't have. Mental health resources here, and we need that, we need someone to bridge that gap. Uh, so when the final, the call finally came, six hours later, he was instructed to go to the nurse's station to take the call with zero privacy. He wasn't comfortable in that setting to say what he needed to or to get help. He was released to go home. And it didn't turn out well. I did not know that person. When I got the call asking if my name could be given to the family for guidance, I said, yes, of course. But I knew immediately that we can do better as a community. Jefferson County, Indiana, where I was born and raised and where I live is better than this. Our people matter more than this. So I started the group, Citizens of Jefferson County for Suicide Prevention. Within five days of scheduling our first meeting, we had twenty two people. At our meeting. Our Facebook page now has three hundred and forty three followers in less than a month. This tells me that this is a serious topic of concern for our community. I have people who are turning, reaching out to ask them what they can do. We will start two support groups in August, and hopefully a third. I'm looking for someone licensed to do the third one. Um, the other two people are trained. So we're gonna start a, um, support group for, um, families who have lost someone. And, um. I'm hoping to start one for people with thoughts of suicide, but I want somebody licensed for it, do that, I want to make sure that they're, they're trained. Um, in idealism of suicide. And then, um, my brain just lost the other one. Um, anyway, so we're gonna start those in August. Um, and because of my Facebook page, because we. Oh, I had been going two weeks, a week ago, July the seventh, July seventh. An aunt reached out. And said her niece was a single mother of three, was overwhelmed with bills, and was talking about ending her life. I immediately went to the home. After talking to the woman, found out she really didn't want to die, she just didn't see a way out. She works forty hours a week, she lives paycheck to paycheck. After her lawnmower broke down, then her car, bills piling up, she didn't see a way out. I was able to reach out to my newly formed team, within an hour, we had food, but she wasn't eating because she didn't have enough food for, for the last for the children. Got food, she wasn't looking handouts, she wasn't asking for help, she was suffering in silence. What that tells me is I know there's a lot of other women and men in our community that are suffering in silence, who don't ask for help. We have a lot of those people that do ask for help, there are a lot of people who won't. So at any moment, we can have another scenario just like this, and another, and another. We also know that substance abuse disorders sufferers and homeless. That who suffer mental illness have a tendency to have suicidal thoughts. And let's not forget our children, the children who are raising themselves because their families are split up. Or their mom and dad are struggling out on drugs, the children who are confused about what life is supposed to look like. Those who are abused and neglected, where's their voice? I would like for us to have a crisis intervention team, I've done a lot of research in the last three weeks. A lot of counties surrounding here have crisis intervention team. With trained individuals who know how to handle crisis with those. Substance abuse disorder, mental illness, homelessness, and trauma. It's a forty hour training, the training. It's a forty-hour training. The training is free. But there is a cost, because we're gonna have to have officers away, we're gonna have to have overtime. Um, you know, there's a cost involved. Nothing is totally free. The statistics show that a crisis intervention team, counties that have those have less arrest and less bodily force. In a crisis. Our law enforcement officers, the EMTs, teachers, were never really intended to be mental health counselors, but we were put in that role every day. They're usually the first on the scene of any crisis. Pulling up white sirens with aggressive line languages isn't always the best way to approach somebody who suffers a schizophrenic episode. So the crisis intervention training would train them how to approach in a safe manner, right? So I would like to give our law enforcement officers the tools they need to safely do their jobs and effectively. I'm willing to become a trained trainer in CPR, if I can find a sponsor who covers five hundred dollars cost. I would like to see all EMTs, dispatchers, clergy, firefighters, teachers, bus drivers, and anyone else on the front lines have a minimum of suicide prevention training. I also got a call today because of the free link that I put on my Facebook page for an awareness class. Twenty-minute awareness suicide prevention class. The girl took it online. She works in a store here in town, and someone came to her store and had a spin out, was really, she wasn't talking about suicide, but she was struggling. And this girl had the bravery to approach her and talk to her because of that twenty-minute training she had just taken. And she thanked me. She said, I would never would have been comfortable talking to someone. Had I not taken that twenty-minute training. That's how simple this is, and how much we can help each other. So my goal is I would love to see at least five of our county, five of our city, and two from Hanover. Officers training in crisis intervention team training. I believe it's our duty and privilege to offer hope to those who have lost everything. So CIT, what is it? It's an abbreviation for crisis intervention training. Not to be confused with something that's already in the academy. Sounds like it is CIT, but it's criminal investigative. So it's certainly totally different. Crisis intervention training is separate training, it's forty hours specifically for substance abuse disorder, mental illness. And suicide prevention. So it's an effective law enforcement training and response program designed for first responders who handle crisis calls involving involving people. With mental illness, developmental disabilities, alcohol, substance, abuse disorder. And we know that our police officers are facing upstays on a day-to-day. I had a meeting with Harold Moser and Najabun Najabun on Friday. Um, they are very excited about this. Um, most of their guards are um with the police. Their whole situation as well. Um, this is, this is pretty new. I've just been at this less than a month. Um, but the training includes things like crisis intervention, de-escalation, signs and symptoms of mental illness. Suicide risk factors and interventions, simulated hearing voices exercise, military and veterans issues. Trauma, PTSD, personality disorders, substance abuse and addiction disorder, responding to children and adolescents. Developmental disabilities, homelessness, and mental illness, and all kinds of other things are part of that training. Some of the benefits um is a decrease in the numbers of injuries to officers, decrease in numbers of injuries to the citizens. Improves overall public safety, rapid and effective crisis response. And has enhanced de-escalation skills for officers, decrease in using force during a crisis event. Um, cost savings in time and financial resources. So there is um a lot of benefit um for this free forty-hour training. Like I said, I know nothing is really free. But um. Suicides happen every five seconds in this country. Someone takes their life. And um I would love to be able to become a trainer. And get um more people trained, and I would like to see our community have a crisis intervention team. So I'm not really asking for a dollar now, but for support, and if our police department and. Sheriff's Department would agree, um, we could maybe offer some funding to take care of those officers who are gonna be covering all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is. My name is Jason Crania. I'm with Course Services. Julie Mitchell is here with me. But she has graciously yielded the floor to me. So, but before I got uh get started, I just wanted to say um to DM, yeah?
Deana.
Deana, sorry, Deana. Um, my name is Jason Crania, and I don't know if you have been in contact with it. If not yet, but I had um written a email response and stuff. But just to the council that you know too, that in February, the county has already started the process of getting the CIT training. Already completed. So we've been meeting monthly um to be able to get it done. If you are interested in in participating in that, becoming a trainer and everything like that, we are meeting monthly. We had a kickoff meeting, um both the sheriff and Madison Police, um the sheriff and chief. And and Chief Wallace were both there and committed to having people trained. Um, so it's already picked off. It's already going. So, you, yes, you are welcome. Um, so, um, but what I am here for tonight is to be able to. To talk a little bit about a grant opportunity that we have received and to be able to tell you how those funds can be spent. If the council so approves. Um, we have applied for a grant called JDAI. Which is stands for Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiatives. Um, this is a statewide program that is ran through DOC. That is looking to be able to take kids out of detention centers and to be able to help them with alternatives. Uh, to that, to help them in any way they possibly can that is not just simply detention. Um, there has been a a lot of other counties have, who have already had. Um, this program established, it has been very successful for them. We applied for it. Judge Moat is in favor of it and has been um uh with outside at all the meetings. Um, how we are going to be using this money is to be starting a program for truancy. Um, and for our school suspension specifically. So right now, when a child gets suspended from Madison or from Hanover. Essentially, they get a free vacation for a week and they can go home and play Xbox. Um, we're trying to eliminate that by having an out-of-school suspension program. So that these kids, when they get suspended, they will be coming to a classroom where they will be required to be doing their homework or schoolwork. And then in the afternoon, they will be doing community service out in the uh community. And doing whatever is necessary to be able to help the community. Um, one of the programs that um they have had success with too is uh going to. Uh, old folks homes and having interviews with them. It helps them build their. Uh, communication skills. It helps the kids uh communicate better. They work on their communication skills. And and the people in the retirement homes absolutely have, having kid, love having kids come and visit them. Um, we are uh have partnered with both Hanover and Madison. Um, and their uh school system, they're all very excited to be able to be there. We are looking for a location at the moment. Um, and we are trying to see if uh ID tech is acceptable to everybody, because there are students, high school students already there. Um, or if there's another location that might be more appropriate for it. Um, but so far, the the, we would require a teacher to be there that would help teach the kids in the morning. And then also be out with them in the community, and both Hanover and Madison have said, we'll pay for half of the salary. So that they, we can have this program uh happening. So um the. Grant specifically, how the grant works is for the first three years of the grant, it's getting up and running. So they give you a basically um around forty-nine thousand dollars that it has to go towards a salary. Some sort of salary for coordinating all the meetings and getting kicked off and doing all the reporting requirements and everything for that. And then they give you an additional ten thousand dollars to be able to, for implementation, uh for meetings, for trainings. Uh, they have a conference up in um Saskatoon, I think it's Saskatoon. Um, uh, this this fall, but they they have basically set aside some of that time, uh some of that money for us to be able to build to that. Um, so uh after those three years are done, that that coordinator position is done for. It's over with, and then they give you additional funding for programming. Because at that point in time, they say, hey, you guys are basically established, and now you guys can start introducing new programming into it. So then it switches to being able to introduce that new programming. Um, the way that we decided to do it is that we decided instead of hiring a person that would be a specific coordinator. And then essentially having to either come to you guys and say, hey, we want to keep on the coordinator. Uh, and be able to try to get funding, or to be able to say, well, you're done and and you're out. We decided to distribute those additional responsibilities to three people, myself, Julie Mitchell, and then Shannon Bell. Uh, at the juvenile center to be able to um keep all the coordinating and all the reports and everything going that they require us to do. So that then with the understanding that we all know upfront, that after those three years are done with, that that money is done. It's over with, and like, we we will have to continue on that responsibilities or whatever, additional responsibilities. But that we know that that is going to be over with at the end of those three years. So um that is the brief overview of of this grant, and I'll take any questions that you guys have right now.
So does this replace Madison's current? Um, most recently was MAPS. But obviously, there's been a couple different names of that. The alternative, the same type of instead of sending them home for a week. And this is high school only. Race familiar with this program? Um, in the school, obviously investing multiple dollars, because there's multiple staff members, really is could be. Certainly beneficial to the school, and I can't imagine anybody disagrees with um this model for the program. I love it. Um, but I guess is this replacing their old kind of school program?
I will, and I have not. It is not.
So they're still gonna have.
The MAPS program, I believe, is for long-term. This is for a short-term out-of-school suspension. They're gonna be there three to five days.
Okay.
MAPS program is basically for people in jeopardy of.
Yeah, not graduating, yeah. Alternative, they could be there for two years or.
Yeah.
Okay. And Southwestern doesn't currently, I don't think, have anything like that. But when you say, so this, this would be. And maybe a centralized location like ID tech. So this would be Southwestern and Madison's too.
Yes, it would be. And we would also, I mean, those are the the schools we have talked to and everything. But if some of the private academies and everything are are interested in referring people to, we would accept any of them.
And so you said the program will end at the end of three years?
No, it will not. So the coordinating grant will, those that that funding will will end. But the the program will, it will be self-sustainable. So it it the the schools have already basically said, hey, we're on board, we'll pay for the salary and everything like that. So.
So. But the grant itself to that funding piece of it will end.
Yes, it will.
And then who'd you say the grant was through?
Um, it is through DOC, I'm sorry, uh, the Department of Corrections.
Okay, but who, what was the the name of the grant? It was a letter?
Uh JD AI, Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative. And we love our acronyms.
Yeah, when I was working for the school, we got some, you know, suspend the kid for a day or a week, whatever. And we had to check in on my computer, see if they're doing anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's blank screen.
Yes, exactly. And it it's one of those things that, and and then what happens is that that calls, that kid then comes back to school, and they're a week behind. They haven't had anything, and they just get further behind. It gets more and more difficult for them to be able to get good grades. It's just it just keep on perpetuating itself. They get into more trouble because they're frustrated. But they don't have the maturity to be able to deal with it, and it just keeps spiraling down. We're hoping to stop that at the very beginning and get them help. One of the things that also happens a lot with kids being suspended now is vaping. Um, we would have a component to that if kids uh get caught with a vape pen or something like that. That they would also have some sort of training or some sort of ability to be able to deal, you know, with the damages. That vaping can do to you and that and stuff.
And remind me, I'll try and get, it's like, I think the contract's supposed to be back within the next couple of days. The um TPC, the state, it's through the state government, but the, you know, KDH has been the fiscal agent for the, it used to be ITC. The tobacco grant for decades, since its inception, since the master settlement agreement, and the state's allocations, which are going down. We just got a youth tobacco coordinator.
Oh, that's awesome.
It's part-time purchase service, so we saw our full-time adult succession coordinator. But the youth position that I have a feeling, we're talking like within a week, that hire is gonna be finalized. So it's part-time, but it's specifically youth. Some obviously preventative with younger youth. Then specifically working in the schools with all the resource officers, discipline policy. So obviously, that person would be a grand resource for you.
That would be fantastic. And if they are interested, if they do education and stuff like that, we would love to have them come and participate. And do the educational portion. That would be really great for them.
As soon as that's finalized, email phone, I'll get all that to you.
Yeah, please, thank you. Any other questions or anything right now? If not, then I I I know we have worked with Heather and everything like that. We have the line items all set up and ready to go. I would just ask for a motion to view the approved grant at this time.
Yeah, motion to approve the grant.
I'll say it.
First, turn out free money.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, no, thank you. Oh, I really appreciate it, actually.
Yeah, yes, this is true. It could help ultimately. You're exactly right. Additional grants that you can't get, it has to be added with them. Some, I'm gonna, yeah, kind of different transports and, yeah.
So, Franklin Peters' proposal?
That's, so. Neither. Yeah, so um Franklin or Peters and Franklin actually uh did a little rundown of the services. That they offer last meeting, and I now have a proposal from them. It is to not exceed twenty-four thousand dollars for the budgeting services. That we discussed last time and um. I think this is something that we all would get a lot of good out of. Um, I. He said that we could start immediately. I had um Pat look over this. The only thing that he was concerned about was a cancellation policy, so they have added that the parties agree. That if we decide to cancel, we have to give a thirty-day, thirty-day notice to be able to cancel that service. Um, the commissioners actually have to sign off on that because it's a contract. But I just wanted to uh get your guys' blessing, I guess, or emotion that you guys accept it. Uh, moving forward before I propose that to them next week.
Since we're in the half-year, we'll be a half-year for this year, or else?
So, no, they will do the initial, the initial plan is not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars. So he said he could actually get that done to us before we submit our budget in October. So we would have a good idea that of everything going in in October. And then next year for twenty-four, he said not to budget uh the full twenty-four thousand. If we wanted to do this again next year, they would take our numbers and project out another three years. That you normally budget. That you normally budget half and you normally do not use all of that, but you have that money budgeted just in case if we were to make a lit change or something like that. They would be able to advise us through that.
Said my notes from last month, um I had reviewed. Estimating half for future budgeting.
Right.
That said that typically it is less unless there are additional.
Right, unless we have an additional need, but. So and I think especially with the new uh lit tax rates that are out there right now and the new availability of changing lit rates. Um that could help our public safety that um this is definitely something we need to look into.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, uh. Heather, do you want to go ahead and make a proposal or a motion?
No, I can't.
Uh I'll make I make a motion that we uh accept the Franklin Peters' proposal, send it under the commissioners for them to approve it and sign it.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, say in the final saying aye. Alright, all are proposed, most carriers.
Okay, and then the next thing we have is. Our transfers and additional, um so I advertised an additional to lit. Which is eleven twelve zero zero one zero one three zero zero zero. For share of retirement in the amount of a hundred and eighty thousand. Because uh the twenty twenty two retirement amount was not paid until January of twenty twenty three, so that. Messed up our budget going into twenty three. So now we have to have a hundred and eighty thousand to be able to pay twenty three's retirement amount to stop the cycle. Of paying a year behind.
Behind.
So and we've done this before and then it got off cycle again, so I'm trying to correct. This again. So this is the amount that One America says is due. For December of twenty three.
That just brings it back in.
That brings us back up to where we should be for twenty four. So so I just need a motion on that.
My motion too.
Okay, I'll second it. Okay, I have a motion and say, I have all those in favor, say in the final saying aye. Motion carries.
Okay, and our next additional is animal shelter donations, which is um. Four one zero three zero zero one zero two one one zero zero. And this was for donations that she wanted to appropriate for equipment for new dog beds. Um. New dog bed, cat beds, two utility parts, two utility trash can attachments. So it's a total of four thousand uh eight hundred dollars. And this is all in the donation fund.
A motion transfer forty eight hundred dollars from the donation fund. Into. The account and then um well, four one zero three dash zero zero one dash zero two one one point zero zero. No, I don't say.
Second.
And those in favor, say in the final saying aye.
Alright.
Motion carries.
Okay, and our next is just our standard um. Where we're appropriating off of the sheriff's reported collections. So it's one one zero one zero zero one zero one zero one zero zero, accident reports for a hundred and forty five dollars. Eleven ninety two zero zero one zero one zero one zero zero, sex and violent offender registry for twenty dollars. One thousand zero one nine zero two 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 zero zero, medical and hospital in the amount of three hundred and eighty eight dollars and seventy three cents. And four one zero two zero zero one zero one zero two zero zero, which is a sheriff donation line for canine expenses in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
Motion.
And then sure have this, the zero one zero two, that's the donation line number or the nine nine oh one?
No, so it was receipted in to sheriff donation, but it had to be appropriated to four one zero two zero zero one zero one zero two. So that the expense can be paid out.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll entertain a second. All those in favor, say in the final saying aye.
Alright.
Motion carries.
Okay, and then the next is in fund nine one one two campground study for ARPA. In the amount of thirty three thousand six hundred dollars. That was discussed at the last meeting.
In discussion?
What was the amount on that?
Thirty three thousand six hundred dollars.
Okay, I'm looking at fifty five thousand. I must probably be looking at something.
I think fifty five thousand is the total amount that goes for the campground, the regional trail study, the geofencing.
Oh, that's from A R P.
Name of the group? Consulting firms, who have any names?
I believe.
Already.
You asked uh.
So one, is the one group taking care of all of that or is it?
No, and I do not have the additional names for the others. I believe uh Sarah shared with us that it was united for the campground, so we asked earlier.
I saw that too.
The. On the resolution to gaming, twenty five thousand in the store. Why am I talking like that?
We're not very.
Oh, I guess, I started.
Maybe that's more just.
Any other discussion?
Can we just go ahead and approve the three? Let's go ahead and talk through the other two.
Okay, so the other two are regional trail study in the amount of seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars and geo fencing in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Let's go over that regional trail study again. What exactly does that? Uh do. I want to know exactly where where it starts and ends. Well, there's anyone here that can answer that at the moment, but.
This, I think.
The regional trail study, do you have information on that?
That's uh.
We were trying to work with animal college.
Hunter Lit College just put together, working with Jefferson, Clark, Scott, like several counties, everyone up in R D A.
Session openness was discussed Thursday for. I mean, Hanover, open center, I love the, did you?
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
Did you, you guys go? I I went, I went, yeah, can you tell me a little bit?
Well. Basically, what they're trying to do is they're trying to make a connect. From Heritage Trail, if 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 I understood it correctly, out, connect to Hanover. Uh to the Hanover College, so so Hanover College that you can come right into Madison, do a trail. Like a, like a. Bike trail or a hiking trail and then go on up even up into Charles, uh Charles County Park. So they're trying to connect all of that. Uh. And we're talking about biking trails and runners or whoever, you know, hikers uh. So that's the gist of it. And they had some maps up there, but all of it's still kind of tentative, so.
And I think this is just our portion. The other counties are going in, I don't know if it's equal amounts or.
You all feel comfortable with that? I mean, it's, is it is a growing thing across the country and it helps um, you know, improve the quality of life and and draw people to the area. And, you know, I think that's something Jersey County could definitely use uh as well as the push for Indiana to get a healthier Indiana by having trails.
Oh, it's a huge, I mean, not big, I love it, the connection to Hanover directly to college, to downtown, well, obviously.
To Heritage Trail.
Yeah, it'll top back, but then the broader thought down to Clark, um I'm I'm definitely there.
Yeah, I I'm a little concerned about that. I think that's a reach. But, you know, I can see maybe the connection to Hanover College, but. Fifty five thousand, you're saying, to study that? Seventy nine, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, this.
Do we want to pull it out each of them and vote individually or you want to vote versus?
So it's fifty five thousand nine hundred dollars for all three.
Any discussion on breaking it up or do you want to just go with one package?
Okay, actually, it's not. I forgot.
And all that, not that nine one nine two.
And for those in the audience and those watching online that aren't aware of what the uh the campground study was for. About putting in campground spots, because Jersey County become quite a hotspot uh down the riverfront. Good luck getting city Madison spot down there um. You know, footy balls.
Yeah, they're available.
You go on out the road a little further to um. Party Lake, booked up solid. Um so this would actually be a great thing to help bring people into our community and give additional recreational area. And it it'll be an income producer um because it'll be real for the.
And they have the lake out there, so.
Well, I'm okay with everything. I just uh. Is it possible we could table that transfer in additional, but one on the, they hit the trail, so. One more month, is that possible? And then vote for everything else?
That's up to you then.
So you're saying you're good with the campgrounds and the uh.
I say we just vote for them individually and see how the council votes.
Sure.
Okay, that's my recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I motion to approve the thirty three thousand six hundred for the campground study.
Yeah, so I have a second.
I'll second that one.
Okay, all those in favor, say in the final saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh now we'll vote for the uh. Correct connecting trail between Hanover, Charles Town and Madison. I'll entertain a motion to uh. Vote on that.
I'll make that motion.
And I I'll second that.
Okay, then all those in favor, say in the final saying aye.
I'm going.
Motion carries. And then uh on the five thousand, the geofence, geofencing. Okay, five thousand on that, I'll entertain a motion for that.
Great, I'm sorry about that. What what is that again?
I don't, I don't know. So, so it's like a little.
Yeah, I'd like to know.
I can't remember. I've read it, but. Commissioner Little's still out there.
Geo fencing. The five thousand dollars for geo fencing, do you have? So it's geodimographics, A I data. Was what we had in the note.
Is it for the jail?
Is it for jail?
No.
No.
No. No.
I believe it's economic development study. It economic, it studies, I think. It has something.
I would entertain a motion to table that.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Um.
No.
I'm I'm there too, I'm there.
Yeah.
Because I have no idea what it is and I'm sorry, I wasn't here last month, so.
Yes, yes, this still again.
A little some favor to table, let's say in the final saying aye.
Alright.
And carries.
Okay, the other thing discussed at last meeting. Uh was money for Spring Hill Cemetery out of the historic board. And it is, that fund is four nine zero three zero zero one zero three zero one zero zero, and this is for restoration of the chapel.
I'm going to go ahead with that.
That's certainly not.
All those in favor, say in the final saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so the resolution now.
Two hundred and seventy six thousand, two hundred and fifty three seventy three?
Yes. Will be our new amount. Two seven six, two fifty three, seventy three.
Resolution ten.
Two seventy six, eight fifty three, seventy three. Do you have a motion on that? Pardon? A motion for that. Okay.
For the amount of two seventy six.
Two seventy six.
Fifty three seventy three.
This is on the paper. I'll entertain a second. All those in favor, say in the final saying aye.
Alright.
I'm just. Resolution ten, oh yes.
Heather, do you want to discuss the salary ordinance?
Yeah, so also I have a copy of the salary ordinance over there. This is the only thing changed on it this time. Is adding the role that was established at the last meeting for the assistant health department administrator. And for state board of accounts, we have to have a motion and sign every time we change that.
I'll entertain a motion for the salary ordinance.
Um I'll make a motion that the salary ordinance. Adopted with the addition of the new health department administrator position.
Six seconds, all those in favor, say in the final saying aye.
Alright.
That's all she has. Is there any question or discussion from the audience?
I I would ask um. Could you give an update on the jail force? Laura. Since you're here, I'll put you on the hotspot. It's so good to see you here.
Oh, yeah, I think. I don't really have a whole lot of update, other than we don't have a date yet.
That's great, it's pretty well done. I'll touch up um. Condrey is forward, curb side walk, road base is down, we have one minor code. Uh they're working on the west entrance, east entrance, uh S A S is doing the security and control cameras. Uh all kind of little incidental stuff. But it is really, I mean, it's good. I mean, you can see what's being done, not this, that's what I believe.
You have an estimate, what is state?
I'm staying probably like we're always, what do you think, conservative as well?
Yeah, we're hoping to be in there by like October and once it's turned over and. We get training and. There are people up there.
Just, the only reason I ask you is so that the council and we can, you know, with budgeting and everything coming up, that we can assist you. Uh the commissioners and us, because you know, we want to do the open house, we want to make sure that we communicate that in plenty of time for the public to have some type of notification. Um we'd also like to have pictures of the current jail inside, of course, without any anyone in there. I know that would be hard. But just to let them know what kind of conditions that we currently have to, you know, our jailers. Um the, you know, our team people down there that they have to work under and to know what they're coming to and the and the progress and and the. You know, the facility that we have. You know, the facility that we have made now that is more secure, more sound, the structure that we have made for our community. Um, so I would like to have like some picture board up there.
We could actually take the picture of the prisoners and use pics like their face.
Well, we actually, um, so. Previously, when we discussed, we've even um reached out, our. Um food company is willing to provide all of the food for us to have an open house, quality to the public. So we have that all set up previously, they're still on board to do that. Um, we just don't currently have a date yet, so. Everything's just projection until we get. Something a little more finalized that will allow us to actually go ahead and do that. But I mean, we're, we could probably put together another walkthrough if you guys wanted to walk through again and see it, it's definitely different.
We would, we would like that, I kind of put that in our budget session, August uh fifteenth. Because when I went to the construction meeting, they said that it might be completed, so I said, we'd like to bring. So, so just keep that in mind, you know, some time out so that we can get plenty of uh notice to our. You know, our community to let them know that they can schedule it and put it on their calendar and have time to come out and um. Do a walkthrough, you know, you might wanna have one or two nights to be able to do that walkthrough with public. And, uh, cause I know that they're interested, I've had so many people say, when is this gonna happen? When are we gonna make, you know, and so, you know, it's where you are and we wanna make sure that that's. You know, something that you guys can show off and.
I probably get that question as much as you do.
Oh, I know you get it more, I know you get it more, but we want you to be able to show off your new facility and be out there and.
The inmates are excited about the game.
But it it's going to be a nice facility, um, it's gonna be more secure. Um especially for our employees that work there, so, and that's, that's the key. And not have any more, hopefully these insurance issues. Um, what about um our, you know, current? Uh status on where we're at down there as far as inmates and who we're housing out and count number, do you have any numbers?
Um, I don't know exactly right now, I know over the fourth of July, we were back up at like one eighty to two hundred. Over that period, so we, even though we had brought them back originally, like the week prior. We immediately had to rehouse them out of county again. Um, we're still in that one seventy five range, I believe, right now.
Can I ask you a question about when we send inmates to other facilities, Crawford County or wherever? We decide to send our um inmates. Do we send our best? Or do we send our worst?
It just depends, um, other counties won't accept certain inmates. And it really does kind of depends, a lot of time it's, it's based on their classification, like if they can't be housed with other inmates. That could be gang related, it could be different things like that, so they can't be in the same facility. So they get housed in another facility just for that reason. So a lot of times. When we do boot up inmates to other facilities, we take one of theirs in return sometimes. So we never wanna give somebody the bad inmates, cause then they send us the bad inmates.
Right, right. Just over the course of the last couple of weeks and then over the weekend, I was um. Had the pleasure of meeting with some probation officers from Marion County. And they have an issue with. A certain street where a lot of their people that come out of their facility up there hang out. And I don't know if you've been up there, but I guess it's, it's a big issue. When they um have their inmates, they stay. And and so they cautioned us, saying, you know, when we have the additional beds. You know, and you bring in inmates. What type of inmates do you think that you might be taking in? Do you think you're gonna be taking the best of the best, or you think you're gonna be getting problems from other, you know, jails? And I was like, oh, I never thought about it that way, and then when they do their time and they come out of the system. What, what county do, so they're saying, I'm taking my county, he said, Marion County, they stay. So we have the worst from a different county and they don't go away. So um you might be inheriting someone else's. But, you know. Problem.
So you absolutely can.
So can you uh say we can't take those prisoners?
Absolutely, there's no, there's nothing to say that we have to keep, just like they don't have to keep our inmates. It's just an agreement between the departments. That if there's space, we'll take them. Um, if it's a problem person or a medical issue. Um, even if that issue came up while they're in the other facility, they'll send them back to us.
So we can be selective.
Yes.
Right, I know, when we first started shipping them out there, there was a couple. Take level six offenders. Give money from the state.
We don't want to add additional issues for you to kind of, you know, perpetuating this problem, they're gonna come back and you're gonna send them out and then they're gonna come back. That's not what we're looking for.
But if we're housing someone here, do we return them to their county for release?
It just depends on what their charges are and if they're, if they're. Hosts spending. If they're just here for the, their, to finish out their sentence, they could get released from here. If they're not transporting back and forth through corridor otherwise, so it just kind of depends on what the inmates. How it is.
So they end all this, they could stay.
They could, I mean, they do sometimes, their property and everything comes with them when they come here, so it is possible for them to get booted out the door in a different county.
Thanks for your honesty, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Are there other department, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just had a public kudos to give to the sheriff's office, uh, you know, police don't always get recognition for stuff, but. Especially Chief Deputy Pickle, we had our family fun event for kindness. Boy, she was there and she had uh, she had officers with us, they uh, they even donated a couple of bikes, so. You know, kudos to the sheriff's office.
Are there other department heads or acting department heads or commissioner Little? You guys, any of you have any?
I, I just gonna run through some stuff real quick. Uh, let's see here, the uh, the EMPT salary grant has, I think that's been deposited today, can you give me a copy of that? Um, so that thirty thousand dollars, the bank today was just good news. Uh Logistics Building in Hanover, uh, we're talking with ETC, the people that did the camera system and the matching system here. And I'm even talking with Lindsay at the health department potentially for them to take a look at that building as well. Um, to get that squared away, but I can't, can't call me back. So sorry, I don't have more about that at the moment. Uh, we were using Troy Morgan's golf cart or his trailer to haul the golf cart around when we needed it in different places, all that business. And uh Robert Black was, was, was gracious enough to get project that, but and he secured that trailer, now we got to check, I just need to go figure out some time this week. Uh, let's see, tomorrow, if anybody's interested, they uh, we're doing a tour of the state emergency operations center. Um, and logistics building, if you guys haven't been up there to, to see that and a little bit of that, but there's some of that vision that came back from, so. If you've not been there, just take out a buddy to see that, it's fairly impressive, to be honest, so if you're free and wanna drive, let me know. Well, we'll meet up and take off and get up there. Um, new community grants been submitted, um, community foundation grants, I still got a few things to get, firm it there for that. And uh, and then get that submitted before the deadline. Um, our multi hazard mitigation plan. There's a little bit of language change that the state was gonna do that on that. And my guess is um with our fork truck as well for the logistics building here, it's sitting on somebody's desk. In a pile of things and somebody's just not got to it yet and checked it out the box and I'm hoping to knock on a couple of doors tomorrow along up there and say. Where, where we have some of this stuff, so we can get that done. Um, this wall, um, as, as you may or may not know, is, is super demo, this will. Pretty packed up in this little room here, so that's been a project where I'm gonna get done for a good while. And um, so I've got one estimate on that, that he initiated and I just firm it up a bumper a couple of dollars last week sometime I talked to him. And um, he's just gonna review everything, I think the biggest portion of that is that foldable wall that's, that's, that may have changed price wise a lot of it, they were gonna check on that and they're gonna let us know. Um, we give them a start date of the twenty fifth, I think, is, is it possible, do I need to get other quotes for that? Or since.
What is the amount on that?
I think it was twenty, twenty two-ish, I don't have that.
It's not over that uh sweet amount, so you're under the amount, so you'll, you don't.
So there's some of the stuff on things that they're gonna bash, I just see, I wanna come make sure I'm gonna write that, so. So, all right, so I, I'm, I'm hoping they're planning on getting started, but he was gonna give us an updated estimate on that, just to see if there was any change to that. But and he said that that movable wall piece was really the biggest, biggest dispense. And I think it put a closet somewhere out front out there in the lobby, cause there's a lot of space out here and we're gonna lose a little bit of closet space here. Uh, let's see, what else, uh, Troy was uh looking at getting a couple of more pallet racks for the warehouse and, and handling. And so I think it was about nineteen hundred bucks a piece, I think we got plenty of room in the budget for those things, I want business, but just wanna give it. Moving on with the plan, keeping this thing on the rails and moving forward, so.
I have to give you kudos now, there's stuff.
I spoke to Jared Shepherd over the weekend and he said um, to tell you hi and.
I like that guy, man, I really.
I know, he's the EMA director, for those that don't know Jerry, he's the EMA director out of Jennings County. He's a friend of mine and a friend of my husband's and he said, um, thank you for hanging in there and stepping up.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I think we've all really kind of come close to getting released to this Clark County, Jennings County ourselves, we really. They really bonded, we just go and help each other do everything and it needs to go on, so it's, it's a, it's a good relationship with those guys and, and. I appreciate them as much as they do, and out of all this, in the end, I mean, their friendship with yours is certainly a bonus. I mean, for sure, I've had, haven't run into that guy before ever, it's just great to meet him. But uh, yeah, we got a great team, great team, so.
Yeah.
Well, thank, thanks to you and Robert for your extra work, you too.
Yeah, absolutely, we've, we've got a great team, you know, I mean, you say, man, I'm, I'm gonna follow Mike, it's, it really is a good team effort from everybody's part. And um, somebody sees something needs to be done, just, you know, we all discuss things and they're right, get some information in real time and working close with the commissioners. And uh, and you guys as well, I mean, I, I'm, I'm a relationship person like Troy is. And I feel like we have a relationship with each other and we have responsibility to each other, and if we don't have a relationship, then it's pretty easy to say no or. Or, or all the things and, and not be so close and work together, I mean, ultimate goal is, is to get your all this together, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Give me a call, but any questions? All right, I'm gonna also get up at six o'clock in the morning, I'll pick you up at six thirty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to.
I'll make a motion.